We'll go ahead and call to order the Thursday, October 10th, 2019, meeting of the Clive City Council. Would the clerk please call it all?
Mayor Sirksina?
Here.
Councilmember Klein?
Here.
Councilmember Edwards?
Here.
Councilmember McCoy? Councilmember Judkins?
Here.
Councilmember Weaver?
Here.
I believe Councilmember McCoy is traveling internationally, so safe travels to him. Nice to see everybody here. Good evening. If you would be so kind to stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. One time allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. The next item is the approval of the agenda. I'm not aware of any changes.
Move approval.
Moved by John, seconded by Eric. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Agenda is approved. Now we'll move to citizens' presentation. This is where anyone in the council chambers can address the council on an item that is not on the agenda. Is there anybody here to do that this evening? Seeing none, we'll move to consent items.
Move the resolution.
Second. Moved by John, seconded by Eric. Further discussion? Seeing none, will the council please vote? That item passes four to zero. Okay, next we have a presentation from Leisure Services, the Leisure Services Annual Report. Todd.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
The Leisure Services Department is starting a new initiative this year. We, last month, the staff at all the board meetings prepared an annual report on the fiscal year and reported out to the board. And what we've done tonight is invite some board members and staff to come and share the annual report with you folks. And in your packet was this infographic that kind of highlights what they'll be covering tonight. And with us tonight, I've got Doug Harris and Steph Keller, our staff, David Bell with the Park Board, and Larry Morgan with the Library Board. So we'll start off and have David come up and begin our presentation.
Thanks, Steph. David, welcome.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
It appears you get a lot more folks showing up at your meetings than we do at ours. Pretty interesting. So thank you so much for this opportunity. Really looking forward to it. We had another great year for both the parks and the recreation side. And I just wanted to share a handful of accomplishments. The first, talking about parks, Canary Park, I believe I saw just about everybody there. We were able to open up Canary Park, and that was extremely enjoyable. And that was just recently, earlier this month, if I'm not mistaken. Landscaping management, we've been able to do some planning and some implementation. I believe one of the projects was just outside the library, if I'm not mistaken. Correct, Todd? We've had a handful of folks that recently retired from the parks side, but we were able to work towards replacing each one of those individuals as well. On the recreation accomplishments, Field Three over at Campbell's Park, they updated that area. Originally, that spot was maybe the field that people didn't want to use so much because of the lighting. Now Field Three is the field that people ask to use, do the LED lighting. The Aquatic Center had another strong year. The attendance was 52,561, which has been consistent with the last three to five years. And then our special events like Food Truck, as I was, Food Truck Friday are continuing to grow. We've had eight Fridays, or as I was, we've had eight planned. Six of them already took place. We have two yet planned for this fall as well. And then also, in regards to volunteering, everything that we've been doing has just been continuing to grow. A lot of the citizens have been volunteering for any of the events that we've been asking for help on. With that said, I'm going to introduce Doug Harris. He is the manager of the Recreation Department.
David, thank you. And thank you for your service on the board many years now. Great contributions on our behalf, so thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I just wanted to chime in a little bit on the volunteer programs that we had. In the fiscal year, we had 568 volunteer hours, which has more than tripled over the last couple of years. So we're happy to see that. This year, Trash Bash had 61 volunteers. We had those Workday, Weekday Fridays that had, we had, we've been working with the ITA group from West Des Moines, and they've been bringing volunteers on a regular basis on Fridays. We've been averaging anywhere between 10 to 12 per time, and they've been helping out a lot. So. Also on the Adopt a Trail and Adopt a Park program, 17 of our 21 areas are adopted. Actually, I just got another one this past week, so now we're up to 18, but we'll be adding Canary Park next year. So. We received a grant last year from Clive Communities Foundation to purchase some new equipment. We planted 69 new trees. We're planted by volunteers. The big one was, we planted 25 trees in the Green Belt on a Saturday morning with the help from the Iowa Natural Heritage Foundation. And we've also been working with high school students with Silver Court Hours to help score keep at all of our youth basketball programs on Sundays in the wintertime. So. I'm looking for this program to continue to grow. We're always looking for different projects. I'm working with our Parks Maintenance Staff, and it's been a great year. And with Clive Festival coming on board and so forth, I see even more volunteers helping our department out. So that's basically what I had. Basically, we saved roughly $7,000 in staffing. We helped develop pride in our community, and it's exercised on our Parks and Recreation programs. So, thanks for having me.
Excellent. Thank you. I appreciate it very much.
Next up is Larry from the Library Board.
Mr. Deitch, what a pleasure to see you.
Thank you. Nice to be here and appreciate the opportunity to speak briefly with you about the exciting things that have happened in the library in the past year. First, I would tell you that as an almost 40-year resident of Clive, I was really proud and impressed with this Clive Library for years before I ever became involved in the board. The friendliness and helpfulness of the staff, the wide range of materials that we offer, the programming is especially impressive. And through this programming, I have met people that I would have otherwise never gotten to meet. Simon Estes stands out, Chuck Long. There was an international spy who I heard speak. I would have never bet the Police Chief of Clive, probably, had I not gone to his presentation and hoped to only meet you in those circumstances. So again, I'm extremely proud to be on the board, but have always been proud to live in a place with such a vibrant library. Special thanks to Councilmember Edwards for always attending our meetings and sending us clippings and notes occasionally, which we appreciate. And you probably have a better attendance record than some of our board members, but we certainly appreciate that. There were some keen new initiatives for the past year. One of them, which I find amazing, is the Makerspace items that are available for checkout. These are a way to offer patrons to try things they might not have otherwise tried. Things like a sewing machine, a hot air gun, a circuit, a woodworking kit, things that were certainly not in our parents' libraries, that you can now check out from the library, which I find just amazing. And that's been quite popular. Also, you may have, I'm sure, noticed, because you probably approved, the final phase of the library refresh with the new circulation desk installed, which is, first of all, more user-friendly for the patrons. And secondly, it allows the staff, they're elevated a little bit, so now they can see what's happening in the library a little bit easier. And the patrons can now have a better look at the librarian and find them if they need them. And then there's a wonderful program which we added, which is called the Adventure Passes. These are free passes for families to places like the Blank Park Zoo, the Science Center, the Botanical Center, the Breton Skating Plaza. I know when we first initiated the program in the early part of the summer, and Stephanie told us that she was concerned people weren't signing up. I learned when my granddaughter came to visit in August, and I wanted to take advantage of it, they were all booked up. And it became a really, really popular program, and all the passes were virtually checked out all the time. So that's a tremendous thing the library is able to offer. And then I talked briefly just about the program offers, and it continues to grow for all ages, but especially for adults. And last year, or this past year, I should say, there were some 20,000 people that attended these library programs. And one of the most popular, just to address one adult program, was the Decluttering Series. And apparently, there are a lot of people who want to declutter because this drew a tremendous amount of people to several different programs. In addition to that, of course, there are a lot of children's programmings, and they've always been impressive. The annual children's Halloween Hop was so well-attended in recent years. It used to be just one was enough. Now multiple ones have to be scheduled because of its popularity. So again, appreciate the opportunity to serve you. Proud to be on the Library Board, and I'd like to introduce Stephanie Keller.
Larry, quickly, before you go, thank you for your service. I love your enthusiasm. It's infectious.
Oh, I appreciate that.
It's really cool to see what is happening, and we've, and all of us up here have watched these trends.
Good.
March forward over time, and it's just great to see.
Yeah, it's a great library. Thank you for your time.
Nice to see you. Stephanie, good evening.
Good evening. Thanks for having us. So I'm just going to talk a little bit about one of our more popular downloading services called Hoopla. And if anyone who has not had it would like to download it, I'm going to leave some, a little brochure, because it's literally three steps to download it on your device. So Hoopla is a service that we started in October of 2016 for our patrons to utilize. The app can be downloaded on most popular devices. And Hoopla is so simple to use. Our patrons can instantly borrow, stream, and download the eBooks, audiobooks, comics, music, and movies. And the bonus is, there's absolutely no waiting periods for any item on this service. And the checkout times range from two days to three weeks, depending on what item you're downloading. In 2019, we had 7,485 items checked out on this service. And also in 2019, we added 270 new patrons to the service, and all of those users were Clive residents. And there's a charge per download for these items, which ranges from $0.49 to $3.99, depending on which item you're downloading. And that, that charge is covered through the library budget. Because of the ease of use of this, this service, we can, we expect to see continued growth on the service. And our hope is that Hoopla will become a service offered through the state library in the upcoming years. So thank you for allowing all of us to come. And if there's any questions that we can answer for you, we'd be happy to do so.
Stephanie, great job. That council questions, comments for Stephanie or any of our presenters tonight. A great job by everybody.
Real quick, with Wildwood Park, when do we look at completion? I know we've done a lot, been working consistently on that, Todd. What are we looking at, an opening date for that?
Well, we're, we were hoping to have it done by the end of the month. If the rain dries up, it will help. The, the one play area, staff has got that about 85 to 90% prepped. And then the, the larger play area, we're just having a lot of trouble with that. We might actually have to come in and remove what's there and put in some new dirt. Just, it's not compacting the way we need it. And then we've got the playground installer and the surfacing installer scheduled in a week and a half. So we're still shooting for the end of the month. Looks like after today, it's going to dry up, which will help us tremendously.
Todd, quickly, on Aquatic Center attendance, and that's been fairly consistent. You've been able to maintain that with school schedules and everything else. I don't know if that's something you'd like to maybe add a little bit of color to. That's been something that we've really had to pay attention to, particularly over the last couple of years.
Yeah, there's basically a $5,000, not $5,000, 5,000 people variance between the last three to five years. Sometimes it's a little up higher, sometimes a little bit lower. This year was a little bit towards the lower end. I know Brian's worked to try to make things easier for daycares to come and use the facility. This year, there were some weather impacts that we shut down because, I mean, the beginning of June was a little chillier than normal. So the weather has a lot to do with it, too. But I know Brian and his staff are always looking for new ways to get people in the gate. Our attendance at our adult, like water walking and water aerobics, has just exploded this last summer. In fact, we actually adjusted ours so we could accommodate more people in those programs because they're so popular, and people keep wanting more and more, so.
Well, very, great job. Todd, thank you, both departments and to our volunteers. Just tremendous work, and so thank you all.
Again, thank, thank you so much for this opportunity to share, you know, just give you a little background and keep you up to date what's going on in Leisure Services.
Excellent. Thank you, Todd. Thanks, everybody. Okay, we're going to move to action items now. The first one is a resolution approving the professional services agreement with SVPA, a Clive Public Safety Facility Design. And we have Angie here to speak on that. Angie, good evening.
Good evening. How are you guys?
Wonderful.
Good. SVPA was supposed to be here with me, but they're tied up at another commission, even though they were number one on the agenda at 5 o'clock. So. So it's just me today, unfortunately. So as you guys know, we put out an RFP. We interviewed three people, those being SVPA, OPN, and SHIVE. As a team, we have decided to move forward with SVPA. So their, their contract price was really good. Their team was wonderful. And we were able to get all the services we needed within their dollar amount. So they're very strong on the fire side, less strong on the police. But we have put an allowance in there to bring in a police consultant as needed, just like as a peer review. And I think the chief's okay with that. We've talked through everything, so we're happy recommending SVPA to be added to the team. We've met internally once. Everybody, all the personalities get along. I think we're headed in the right direction, verifying the existing space plans. We're using your current space needs and just verifying that nothing has changed. And so far, we're pretty close, maybe shrinking a few things rather than adding anything on. So our next steps will be to look at the site very thoroughly and see what we can do, what should be on the site, and how this should look. So our recommendation is SVPA. And I can give you dollar amounts and all that if, if you would like.
Sure. Council questions for Angie this evening? I know we're really just getting started with pretty exciting stuff, and we're probably looking for demolition.
I think in December-ish.
Yeah, more than likely, Your Honor. It'll be setting a public hearing in November for a bid award in December because of the size of the demolition. That'll need to be competitively bid.
Very good. Other questions? Eric, go ahead.
Matt, what are we seeing with some of the asbestos removal and some of the areas there? We've worked out with NAP.
All completed. It was all completed prior to our formal closing and acquisition of the site. So right now, fire and police have utilized the facility for some, some training. But now we're getting to the point, especially as the cold weather starts to come in, where we're more likely going to start shutting off utilities and then getting the building prepped for demo. There is one training item that the Police Chief would like to do before we demolish the building, and that's trying to drive the Bearcat through the side of the, side of the building at some point to test out the pushing ability. But other than that, no, nothing. Not the whole, not the whole Bearcat, but.
Love to have an audience for that.
Yeah, audience and video, I'm sure, will, will occur for that. But other than that, we'll wait until we're ready to actually demo the building right before we allow that to happen. But we're just finalizing, also confirming some utilities that, you know, the site's pretty old, and so Public Works has been out doing some die testing on some of the sewers, just to make sure we understand where everything goes before we start tearing up the building. And more likely, it'll just be the building site itself that will be demolished. We'll leave the parking lots and other areas, just because those are stable surfaces for the, the general contractor next year to be able to base operations off those surfaces. And we have to maintain the cross easement with stuff, et cetera, to that traffic signal. So it'll be just mainly the, the building site that will be demolished this, yet this winter.
Location of the utility connections doesn't change, right?
It actually might in a few cases. One thing that we want to do, and this is part of the, the site master planning that's included with SVPA's work, is we might want to take a look at, you know, those utilities haven't been touched in a while. Where stormwater goes, where our water and sewer connections are, there's actually the opportunity maybe to loop our water main over to 90, I'm going to get the street wrong, 94th, to the west. And so we want to make sure we take a look at that, and then, being that we have the opportunity to do that here with, we ran water main over that connected. If you recall, a lot of these sites actually used to be served by Urbandale Water for a long time. And as we did the redevelopment from the east with Natural Grocers, we connected those facilities to Clive Water. There may be some additional work that we want to do, just to make sure there's a loop all the way through there. So there might be some broader utility work that we do as a part of the site project. That wouldn't come until next year, though, as a part of the construction.
Any more feedback from the neighborhood residents?
Nothing at this point. Our intent is, is once we have some more visuals with our work with SVPA in terms of design and schematics, and then have a defined date on demolition, is to have another neighborhood meeting and touch there with a letter to lay out that now they'll see the building coming down and some changes happening, and then start to get their feedback on some conceptual designs related to the buffer on the south side of the property.
I'd move the resolution.
Second. Moved by John, seconded by Eric. Further discussion? Seeing none, will the council please vote? That passes four to zero. Thank you, Angie.
Thank you. Looking forward to this.
You did a fine job.
That's right. I'll see you guys next month.
See you next month. Thank you. Okay, we'll move to action item number two, which is the third consideration of ordinance number 1082, amending chapters eight and nine of Title I of the city code. And this is the city manager expenditure authorization. Matt?
Nothing further on this, Your Honor. We haven't received any additional comments from your approval of the first and second reading, and council, our staff would recommend third reading and move to approval.
Questions, council?
I move that ordinance number 1082 being considered for the third time, placed on its passage and adopted.
Second.
Moved by Eric, seconded by Ted. Further discussion? Seeing none, will the council please vote? That passes four to zero. Let the record reflect that ordinance number 1082 is declared to have been enacted. Thank you. Okay, action item number three is the site plan amendment for 8355 Franklin Avenue. And Amanda?
Fair Council, good evening. Can you guys see the document cam on your end?
Yeah, we can see it up here.
Perfect. I don't want to just be pointing at nothing if you couldn't see it, so.
Zoom in a little bit.
Yeah, we can do, it's a little, it's off kilter here.
Okay, so I'm here in front of you tonight with a site plan amendment for Crestview School of Inquiry. Thank you, Pete.
Other way.
Other way. There you go. Then toward us.
You're perfect. There you go. Everything that you can see.
Kind of like technology.
The school district is proposing a 3,750 square foot addition right here in this area of the site. There's also about 2,100 square feet of some remodel that's interior, addressing some corridors and access points. The addition space is going to be a music room, office, and storage space. The materials of the addition, move it really carefully, match the existing building, so it should all be consistent. There are no impacts to the required parking based on the uses of the addition space. They are adding quite a bit of landscaping, primarily along this western property edge here, which will provide some screening to the apartment residents on that side, from where the new addition is going to be located. No stormwater management is required based on the disturbed area, but they are going to be addressing some erosion issues on site through the site work and replacement of one of the storm lines. And Plan and Zoning Commission recommended approval, and all staff comments have been addressed. So unless you have any questions, we'd recommend approval.
Council, questions?
Move approval. Second.
Moved by Ted, seconded by John. Any other discussion? Seeing none, will the council please vote? That passes four to zero. Thank you, Amanda.
Thank you.
Okay, item four is a resolution authorizing the 2018 flood-prone property Phase II program. Doug?
I'll try doing this without the document camera. You're familiar with the program areas we discussed at the previous meeting, but we are in a position where the city's financial performance at the end of this fiscal year allowed for some additional funds to be allocated towards the flood-prone property buyout program. As you previously discussed, that $600,000 would be directed towards a Phase II of the flood-prone property buyout program. We would utilize the same program document, same methodology that we used with the first phase, with one exception. And that would be in the assignment of the fair market value of the property, as we discussed. Because we've had a period of time elapse since the flood event, and since the assignment of values by the assessor, we would propose to use an appraisal or the 2019 Polk County assessed value as the determination for the fair market value, whichever one is higher. So as I've put together the program documents, again, they are very consistent to the previous or the first phase of the program. I have had some conversation with property owners that are still on the list. And again, I do think that there are enough interested property owners to fulfill the, the available funding. So we are excited to have the opportunity to get going and acquire another two or three or four properties, primarily going to be residential properties in that 78th Street generally area, based on that prioritization list that was adopted by you folks during the first program cycle. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions, council?
Doug, you know, there's two individuals that are property owners on the tier one right there, which we identified as some of the highest threat right there. Those individuals interested or showed interest in stuff, you haven't been part of this program for this year?
Yes, one certainly has shown some interest. Again, it really is going to come down to the dollars and cents, but certainly one of them is interested. We've had several in the lower tiers also interested. So again, if the, if the numbers make sense for people, I suspect that it won't be but a few of the, you know, it'll be the top couple of folks that are remaining on the list. I don't think we'll get very deep into the list.
Ted?
So just looking at the properties and the numbers, high, high-level math, it's like there's eight properties in the tiers, and roughly around a million dollars worth of value, just at the assessed value.
Sure.
And we've got $600,000 here that we're, we're budgeting. Do you foresee being able to get any excess funds to add to this during the year, Doug, or?
Set on that? Yeah, I think, I think as we've reviewed the financials, the $600,000 puts you folks into that sweet spot in terms of the available reserves and also meeting your financial policy directives. So we don't think that there's any additional funds there. If you want to bring additional funds from the stormwater utility or something else, that could certainly be an option potentially. But at this point, we're moving forward with the idea that there's $600,000 available to.
And have we had any additional conversation with Atchison?
We have. We continue to stay in touch with Sam. He is certainly interested in continuing the dialogue, talking about what a buyout program might mean for him and his business. But each time we've gone into the program, you know, that's a pretty large acquisition in terms of dollars. So it's just not quite been right in terms of the city and its finances for it. But certainly, I foresee an opportunity if the city does pursue additional hazard mitigation grant.
So would that be like a FEMA?
Correct. We, we kind of talked a few weeks ago where we could either take the money that we have and continue to try to pick off the properties, the residential properties off the list, or an alternate path could have been to try and use the money that you have and leverage a FEMA grant. I still think that that's an opportunity, but I do and have recommend that we pursue the first option, which is let's try to take out as many of the residential properties, as those are the ones that are kind of most directly impacted. We'll come back again, I think, with new opportunities with the updates to the Hazard Mitigation Program that are anticipated for this next cycle. And I have been in conversation with colleagues at FEMA and others to start that dialogue about how we might get ourselves. about how we might get ourselves positioned properly to take advantage of those opportunities potentially next year.
Thank you.
Doug, what's the timing on the University Photo property?
You are the proud owner of that property as of yesterday.
Wow.
People of Clive.
When will it be?
Demolished?
Demolished.
We have an obligation with the FEMA funding to have that property demolished within 90 days.
Very good. Counsel, are there questions?
Move the resolution.
Second?
Moved by John, seconded by Eric. Any other discussion? Saying now will the council please vote? Item passes four to zero. Thank you, Doug. Okay, the last action item is the site plan amendment with Mercy Behavioral Health Hospital, 1450 Northwest 114th Street. And Jill is going to talk about this one. Hi, Jill.
Hello. Thank you, Your Honor. All right, so you have some items in your packet, a little bit new from last council meeting. So the applicant has a couple of options in there. So staff's position is to try to maintain some consistency throughout the site and the retaining wall materials and the look of that. Since the ready rock wall system must be used in the back for the constructability purposes the applicant laid out in the last council meeting, staff is also looking to recommend using the ready rock along the rear of the prop, the front of the property as well along 114 and Forest. So that's option one in your packet that the applicant laid out. And that wall would be stained and capped with additional landscaping in the front to soften the look along 114 and Forest. And then staff additionally recommends to stain the back as well throughout the site to maintain a higher aesthetic and consistent look throughout.
So option one is staff's recommendation?
Option one with a little more. Their, their recommendation for option one is to have the back wall not stained. Staff would like to see that stained as well to match throughout the entire site.
Counselors, are there questions for Jill on this? Matt, do you have any comments?
No, I just think that, you know, from staff's perspective, maintaining that consistency, understanding the constructability concerns on the south end is, you know, from staff's perspective, that's what we're going to recommend in any situation, to have some consistency in the area. Obviously, you have another option on the table as well, but we understand that there's additional expense with having to stain that south wall, but knowing that there is that constructability issue, to have the consistency, and we appreciate the proposal to have the cap and the additional landscaping on the more important focused area of 114th Street and that frontage. Just feel that that consistency in terms of color of what we've established in the area with other retaining walls would be appropriate and was what we would recommend.
How much is that cost? The cost to stain that back? What the cost difference is on that?
The applicant can answer those questions.
I think we have folks here on behalf of Mercy. Please come forward. Just state your name and address for the record.
Andy Bates with the White's Company. Yeah, so from a cost standpoint, our option one, leaving the block gray, is the base price. I mean, we're adding $65,000 to do that piece of it, but to stain the rest of it, it's another $30,000 on top of that. So it'd get us to a $95,000 option if we're staining the gray block in the back.
Other questions for Andy?
Andy, how long does the stain last? Is there a, you know, is there a timeline on that? Is there a fading period? And then if it does fade, who's responsible for maintenance and upkeep on that?
Yeah, so maintenance and upkeep would be the hospital. I'm trying to remember. Stephanie, you remember on the stain?
Twenty is 25 years.
Yeah, is it 20? Thank you.
It will not be. It's like sitting on a house.
Yeah, thank you.
Other questions for Andy or Jill or anybody?
Is that additional $30,000 within your original budget, or is that on top of?
The 95, the 65 isn't there as well, so it's additional on top of what, yeah. So 65 or 95, we're adding it to the budget right now. Yep.
How much traffic are we getting back there, Matt? I mean, are they anticipating?
The traffic would be, it would be basically just site-specific to the hospital.
What's the, what's the desire of the council? I mean, we have a couple of options here. I think the, probably the critical issue is the visible areas versus the non-visible areas, et cetera. You know, we're, we're talking about $35,000 here. I understand the desire for consistency, but I think we need to kind of talk through that. Herman, Eric?
I like staff's recommendation on the consistency right there. Look, we're getting away from the other system. We are getting to the ready block system. I do like to have the same color throughout, so we're not having a two-tone structure right there. If we're going to do it, let's do it right. That's my thoughts.
Other opinions?
I would move we approve option one with the staining added.
Second?
It's moved by John, seconded by Eric. Is there other discussion at this point? Saying now will the council please vote? That passes four to zero. Andy, thank you, and Jill, thank you. We appreciate your efforts. And looking forward to seeing a wonderful facility as that comes into our, our community. So a lot of work being done now. Thank you again. Okay, we're going to move now to reports. Pete, I'm going to start with you.
Thank you, Your Honor. Only one item tonight. We were invited to participate in a program with the Ray Society, Drake University's program, where they engage members of the community to come and expand their knowledge based on a number of topics. And one of the topics the class will be taking on in the next week will be on emergency management in Polk County. And as part of that, our emergency management op, team invited City of Clive to come and participate specifically to talk a little bit about the public information function in an emergency situation. So I'll be representing the city at that event and talking specifically about all of the early planning we do to be prepared for those, especially flood events and big water events that happen in Clive with frequency.
Excellent. Questions?
Real quick, Pete, speaking of flood events, I know there's a lot of rain in Northern Iowa right there, and it could be forecast to have some more. Have you heard any stretch goals of long-term flood mitigation towards Clive as, as we continue to see these rains fall?
At this point, we're not looking at any imminent problems. You know, this past week, we had high water on Walnut Creek, and we know we've got very saturated soils right now. It's just part of the normal operations of the city. We watch that very carefully. Chief Rowe, while Matt was out, was doing an excellent job of that, and Matt really covers that well for the team. The piece of news, I guess, that I'm paying attention to right now, and still very far out, is what does it look like if we have another very snowy winter and then a very quick fall like we saw this last year as well? It felt like throughout the season this year, we had high water on all sides of us, and a lot of high water that came through Des Moines, but we were fortunately spared some of that. So as we watched that, and as we go through just the normal year-to-year improvement of our table, through our tabletop exercise and through the rest of our improvements to our planning, I feel like we make good incremental progress to be prepared for what might come at us.
So within the next week with the levels of rainfalls, we're not any, we're not in any imminent danger of anything? And Matt, maybe you can answer that?
No, yeah, it, it looks like right now, as we got through today, the last 24 hours, we had about an inch and a quarter of rainfall. It came at a rate that is very manageable. The creek only got up to about four feet, so definitely even stayed within the banks and didn't affect any trails. Looks like we have a pretty good drying pattern and freeze pattern coming in the next, because we have a freeze watch, so you go from heavy rains to freeze, you know. I, I think the broader concern that I have is this is now the second fall in a row where we've seen heavy rainfall in October. And that is typically not the norm, and I think it's just something that we're going to have to adjust to and be prepared for. I mean, if you recall, last year, we had an early October rainfall that was significant where we had some trail closures. I remember that last year and even some in September as well. And if you go a few years back, we had a flood in early December. So things are changing, and it's going to be just require more vigilance and due diligence in terms of monitoring rainfall even into the late fall that we haven't really had to do before. So I think we're good. We're, we're going to get through this now, and it's going to be a drying period for the next week, which is really great to see because it affects also our construction projects that we're trying to work on here, too. Not just us, but also private development as well in terms of home builders. So they're, they usually anticipate this time of year being dry, and I'm sure Pete, with his house being built right now, would appreciate some drying weather here for the next couple of weeks.
Matt, thank you. Anything else for Pete? Pete, do you have anything else?
No, sir.
Thank you, sir. Ted?
All right, MPO exec met yesterday, and I can report that the transload deal was finalized and signed. So that's moving forward. Basic outline is that the MPO will not be making a profit off of this deal. We will be receiving reimbursement for expenses only up to $250,000, so, which it really shouldn't hit that high. And then Des Moines brought up kind of a tangential point with the transload facility. Now, moving forward, they're going to be introducing a, a project for the southeast connector to connect the southeast side to Polk, to Pleasant Hill. And that will be a $9 million ask of the MPO. Typically, the city of Des Moines gets about $3 million a year in allocation, and so what they're saying they may do is come to the MPO in one of two ways, either with a $9 million ask for one year, and then the next two years not ask for any money, or four and a half and four and a half, and then that third year not ask for any money. And then Pleasant Hill also is part of that, whatever year doesn't, funds don't get requested, Pleasant Hill also would not request. So that, what that means to the rest of the communities is there will be a pot of money in those other years available so that if we have anything, any kind of projects that we want to bring forward, there may be one or two years there where there will be more money than normal available.
We're going to have one.
Well, sure, yeah. Yeah, so just want us to keep that in mind and be aware of that, that it hasn't been formally done yet, but that they wanted to kind of lay the groundwork for that. Probably going to be coming here in the next fiscal year, so.
Ted, on that, can you repeat the years at which they're looking for the higher allocations again?
So it would be, it would be the next fiscal year that would, it would be asked for, but it would be for 2024.
Yeah, so it's the federal $20,000. Yeah. Because that may, obviously with our interchange requests, that we're anticipating doing an application, we may wait.
Right.
If they're going to be sucking up most of the money in a year.
Yeah, there'll be one year or certain, if it's, if they do it all in one year, then that year, there'll be a lot less for everyone else, so.
Yeah, that'll, okay, that's something we definitely want to keep an eye on.
But it's not predetermined that that allocation will be made.
Correct.
No, we need to be asking for ours.
Yeah.
For sure.
Yeah. But it's good to know going in.
Yeah, I want us to be aware of that.
Yeah.
And the dynamics of it. And then the last thing, kind of interesting, is that there was a, an e-scooter group that has been formed, MPO, Des Moines Partnership, DART, and others to kind of study the issue for the metro. And I think they may be looking at a kind of metro-wide type ordinance as well. But they're reaching out to the vendors and trying to figure out, okay, how does this affect us? And one of the points that was brought up was that DART, for example, has different goals than what some of the cities do because DART's goal is that, what they call the last mile. So from the house to the bus stop and from the bus stop back to the house, which means that it goes into the neighborhoods, right? And it's not just a downtown thing at that point. So different dynamics there that are being looked at, so anyways. But that's just started.
So what's their timeframe?
They just formed the group, so I don't know. I don't know any of the details, but I'll find out.
And what about the model bicycle ordinance? There's some controversy on that?
Yeah, there, there was some pushback on that on whether that, you know, are we looking to solve a problem that isn't there? Some of it had to do with the ordinance for, do we require cyclists to stop at intersections where there's a stoplight? Or there's a, what's called the Idaho?
Idaho stop.
Yes, rule or whatever.
Where you're going to stop.
Yeah, where it's basically a rolling stop through for cyclists.
Looked like it was a California stop.
Yeah, it's in a car, maybe.
So anyways, it has been drafted, and then I don't know whether they're going to push it through the MAC or not, but there were some, there were some folks at the MPO that didn't like it and pushed back on it quite a bit.
Well, that's a question for MAC is when is it ready for prime time for MAC to take a look at? You know, and so I was asking about the timeframe and such.
Yeah.
Both, both of those issues.
Okay, so we have the policy meeting next week. I'll find out.
Ted, thank you. I appreciate that. Eric?
Nothing.
John? Susan?
At the Finance Committee meeting for Bravo, we learned that they're searching for a new treasurer to be added to the board. So likely a private sector board appointee, but if anyone has anyone to suggest, I would take input for that.
Who was there recently, Eric? Who's?
Sean.
Sean.
I think he's done it for six years.
Yeah, he's been out.
And they said that typically we've had somebody from KPMG. And so if there isn't a suggestion for someone else, they may look to put somebody on from KPMG that done a great job. There's a thought that it could be an opportunity to add a little bit more diversity to the board, which the board is seeking to do.
And I, I see that we have understanding on the, the location for the 15-year anniversary.
Yes, yes.
Yes, okay.
At the botanical.
We're going to wait on the gala just a little, a little while longer.
Correct.
Okay.
But December 4th. Typically, it's a holiday gathering with members of the board and representatives from the various cultural groups that are funded, and they wanted to broaden it a little bit this year, have a bigger event. So it's a nice opportunity to connect with those groups that are being funded.
Sure. Anything else?
No, thank you.
Questions for Susan? Madam Counsel?
Nothing.
Matt?
Just a few things, Your Honor, just to follow up on Ted's comment, Councilmember Weaver's comments related to the model bicycle ordinance. Just to give you staff's perspective on it, we're kind of letting it go through the MPO grinder first before we really invested a ton of time in it because we do have some concerns. A lot of it is, is how do you regulate a lot of the elements of that, and how do you enforce it? It's pretty difficult. And so we wanted to, knowing that the MPO Policy Committee was going to be working through that and, and potentially MAC, we, just at this point, I wanted to advise the council, we haven't put a lot of staff time towards evaluating it, but we will, once we kind of see what comes out of the grinder, if you will, at the end of the, end of the process.
There's a lot of debate about it, I can tell you that.
Yeah, and we knew there would be, and so that's why we kind of put it on the backburner for right now, just to see what, where it all plays out. So just to give you some perspective there. Just to confirm, too, that in the CIP workshop, I think there was some discussion about whether or not we can move it up to 5:30. Didn't hear any concerns with that on November 7th, and we'd actually, are intending to do that in this room and actually set up some tables just because of the system and everything like that. It might be with the length of the discussion, it might be just to give us a little bit more room than the, than the conference room downstairs. But wanted to just confirm, and I can send this out again in my weekly email, that moving it up to 5:30 would work for folks. I know that was a question the last, the last meeting, just wanted to follow up on that. But again, I'll, it's a November, it's a first Thursday in November.
Yeah, in San Francisco.
And I will follow up with that tomorrow. Also related to dates is the next council meeting, we'll have the final strategic plan documents in front of you for approval. I know I've already shared the, the action items with you as our little tracking document that we provided to the council because the staff has already started moving on a number of those items. But wanted to just throw out there, knowing that that's always a difficult workshop to schedule in, in late summer, just wanted to be aware if there's any major dates for council members and the mayor in early August that may be difficult in terms of scheduling around. I'm going to, again, I'm going to mention this tomorrow in my weekly email. Just wanted to maybe get some tentative dates on the calendar now, knowing that that's, it gets pretty hard if we get too close to that day trying to get those workshops scheduled. Also wanted to get the feel of the, I know we did it a little bit differently this year with starting on a Thursday versus a Tuesday, if there was any concerns with that, if we need to have that flexibility. It seemed to work pretty well. I know we ended on a Tuesday, it was a little bit different. Just wanted to kind of check in on that before and try to get some tentative dates on the calendar, so.
I like the Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday better. I mean, I think we can do it that way, but.
We can continue to do it that way. We had to kind of adjust this time because of some dates, but would love to at least get some tentative dates locked down on that, so we'll mention that tomorrow. Also, speaking of strategic planning, and Chief Ryan, he just happens to be in the[1781.82] room, he probably, and I didn't even expect him to be here, but he's checking in on a council meeting, is we're starting the WestCom strategic planning next Tuesday. I don't know if Chief, since you're here, I'm going to, I'm going to have you come up and maybe make a comment about getting started on that next Tuesday and the process. He wasn't expecting any of this, so, but since he was in the back of the room, I'm going to take advantage of it.
Actually, they are going to be in town Sunday, so I'm going to meet with them Sunday afternoon and get it kicked off, and the official big kickoff meeting will be Tuesday, so looking to see what we can do to improve services, continue to grow, maybe lower some costs for the cities that are partnered with us and move forward as an agency. So, looking forward to it. We've, we had, I'm going to toot our own horn, we had 17 respondents to our RFP requests that we put out. Polk County's going through the exact same thing, and they only had four, so I'm kind of excited about that. We really reached out and made some waves and in amongst the providers and very pleased that we had that type of response to what we're looking to get, so.
And one thing I'll mention too, to, so Polk County, the Polk County 911 Board is also, has decided to go through a strategic planning process, which I know I've commented on this previously, is very necessary in terms of where we're at as a county, and actually they're going to be utilizing the same firm that we selected for our strategic planning process, which I think will add, provide some advantages because they will get a really good feel for WestCom and then be jumping in on the Polk County side, that that could be very helpful to have that same consultant working through both those processes. So, Chief Rowe, who's our representative of the 911 Board, confirmed that for me this week that that decision was made, so they just have to finalize some things with, with the consultant. But so excited to have some strategic discussions happening on some important collaborations, both with WestCom and across the county on that, so. Sorry to put you on the spot there, Chief, but we're looking, excited to, we've talked a lot about the, at WestCom, the importance of actually having a strategic plan, and it's good to see those things getting kicked off next week, so. Also today, the design workshop along Indian Hills Woods was finished up, and I was just talking with Doug a little bit before the meeting about the results of that, and, and there'll be some information we'll be providing in the future about the, the design results and some pretty innovative ways that we could reinvigorate that, that channel and that corridor, and it would be some things that we, you know, potentially that we've maybe never have tried, that you've never even seen in the, in the state of Iowa before. So, I think that's the, the value of bringing, doing those kinds of workshops where you're bringing a lot of professionals together and looking creatively at how we can manage stormwater in our community. So, that was a successful endeavor, and we'll continue to engage the neighborhood throughout that process, but that will be something that will be brought back to you in the future in terms of also how we find maybe some grant funding opportunities and then also the working with the City of West Des Moines to see a level of participation there as the drainage, some of that drainage comes from the south. Lastly, just wanted to mention too, that Pete and I will be at the ICMA Conference the 19th through the 23rd, but we'll both be back for the next council meeting, and so the agenda packets, you won't see anything different, but we'll be in Nashville for a few days, and then after that, it's good to be back, so that's all I have, Your Honor.
Yeah, thank you. Questions for Matt, Counsel? Any other discussion items? Matt, thank you. Matthew, any other items?
No, sir.
Nothing further? Counsel, anything else for the good of the order?
I'd just like to remind everybody that Clive Restaurant Week starts tomorrow and runs through the 20th. There are eight restaurants on the list, and if you visit three or more, the more you visit, the more opportunities you get to win a prize.
This will be all over that. Thank you, Susan. Appreciate the update there. Outstanding.
They have to buy food?
I think that's the point.
Saying nothing further, we're going to go ahead and adjourn at 6:53. Thanks, everybody.